Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Nevin if he would come forward to give us an indication. Morning, sir.
Good morning, sir, and to each and every one of you. Let's pray together. Lord, we want to thank you for the beautiful fall season that we are in the midst of and that we're all enjoying. It reminds me of what you said in the Book of Psalms, that the heavens declare the glory of God. And so, Lord, we want to thank you for just painting the beautiful scenery that we enjoy on a day-by-day basis. Lord, I would ask that you will be with these folks today, the commissioners. They have invited me to come and to pray. So, Lord, that tells me that they recognize that they need wisdom from on high. I know that we, these people are very smart people and they have a lot of good ideas. But, Lord, to make decisions without asking for your guidance would be vain. So, please guide them and direct them as they make decisions, as they make policy. That would be in the best interest of our county. Lord, I also recognize in the agenda that there are a couple of law enforcement officers that are retiring and they'll be recognized. I want to thank you, Lord, for those men. Thank you, Lord, for giving them safety all these years, and thank you for their service for our county. And I pray for the rest of our men and women that are protecting us. Please give them safety today, and we pray for direction for each one of them. So, thank you for this time that we've had to come to you. Lord, we want you to know that we love you, and we thank you for all of the many blessings that we enjoy on a day-by-day basis. We pray in your precious name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 So, thank you Pastor Nevin.
Pastor Nevin comes to us from the First Baptist Church of Calver County, located right here in Prince Frederick. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
No. Move to approve the agenda?
Second. Motion second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next is public service announcements, and once again, I have quite a few. We want to send our condolences to St. Mary's County Government for the loss of their past county administrator, Dr. Bridget, who grew up in La Plata and was very active in Southern Maryland. Also, this week, Parks and Rec rolled out their new online registration system. I've been hearing for a long time why we still have paper registrations for our Parks and Rec program. That rolled out this week, so far without a hitch. So, if you want to sign up for Parks and Rec programs, you can go to calvercountymaryland.gov Parks and Recreation and get your instructions of how to sign up online. Also, the public comment period for their election board precinct changes closes this Friday, October the 27th. So, if you have any comments you'd like to make, please get them in by this Friday. We will not be meeting next week, so our next meeting will be on November the 7th. And this Friday, there'll be a Halloween drive-through at the Parks and Rec Park at Halloween Point. I know last year, we had a lot of issues with traffic and backups. So, this year, they've changed the configuration, and you will only be allowed to enter Halloween Point Park through the industrial park on Jip Sale. So, you won't be allowed to enter off of 231, so if we do have a backup, at least it'll be confined inside the park and not be out on the state road. And there's a different system this year. You drive through and you collect your candy at the end. You don't have to stop at all the little individual booths. So, hoping that'll keep things moving. So, they're trying to make changes, and they also coordinated to make sure there's not another public event in Barstow that night, which also helped create some issues last year. So, hopefully, this will be very successful, and it's a very safe opportunity to take your kids out and get some trick-or-treats. We also are updating the Halloween Point master plan. There is a survey you can do online. You go to calvercountymaryland.gov HPP survey, and you'll see it there, and you can take that survey and give comments on what you think the future of the Halloween Point Park should look like. Also, there's an animal shelter adoption event going on next week. On November 1st, Linda Kelly Animal Shelter will celebrate five years of service to Calver County. If you didn't know, the shelter is named after County Commissioner Linda Kelly, who was a very strong advocate for animal rescue and who the shelter is dedicated for. In honor of this anniversary, you can adopt any animal for $5. And that starts on Tuesday, October 31st, and runs through Saturday, November 4th. So, if you think you're in the market for a pet, I think they have lots of opportunity there, and for five, you can't get anything. You can't get a Happy Meal and McDonald's for $5 anymore, much less get an animal that will give you much joy throughout your life. So, and I believe that concludes all my public service announcements. Thank you for enduring that. The next on the agenda is proclamations, and we have several of them today. And the first one is for National Veterans Small Business Week. Commissioner Cox. And I think we have our Veterans Affairs Commission here with us today. Director Obergeis?
Want to start, Julie? Go ahead.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to introduce you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Obergeis, Director of Economic Development. Happy to be here with you today for National Veterans Small Business Week, which celebrates veteran-owned businesses across the country, October 30th through November 3rd. Veterans own almost 2 million businesses and employ over 5 million Americans, and Calver County takes great pride in our local veteran-owned businesses, and we're honoring them through a special salute to businesses campaign. During this special week, Economic Development will be spotlighting numerous Calver County veteran-owned businesses on our county website, LinkedIn, and Facebook pages. We have currently 30 veteran-owned businesses in our online, or in our directory, and we've already featured 12 of them with business spotlights, and we want to highlight more. So, please, if you're a veteran-owned business in the county, we encourage you to reach out to our office so that we can highlight you. You can follow along with our campaign on our website, choosecalvert.com, and we've got several business owners that are veteran-owned here in our community, and I'd like to ask them to come up, introduce themselves, be part of the picture. And I want to also publicly thank them for choosing Calver to be home to their business. So, come on up. Don't let me up here by myself.
Introduce yourself and come on to the front.
Hi, I'm Mike Mels. I'm CEO of Wise Engineering Consulting. We specialize in unmanned aircraft aboard Navy ships.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff King, Veterans Affairs Commission, but also the co-founder and president of Verium LLC. We are an IT and cybersecurity provider for federal government and commercial sector, and a proud recipient of the Department Labor Hire-Vest Award this year, about to be announced.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Come on forward.
Good morning. Dave Volmer, I own Reliable Marine and JF Marine, and I appreciate you continuing to recognize this week it's important that we acknowledge veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here this morning. My name is Al Kincaid. I'm the president of Valor Construction and Home, also the chairman of Board of Operation Raise the Roof. I am also a veteran of Vietnam, disabled. Valor Home, about five years ago, started a 501(c)(3) organization called Operation Raise the Roof. What we do is we give a free roof to disabled veterans where we're to Korea and Vietnam at this moment. We give them a free roof when they can't afford it. So far, we've done 22 roofs. We are looking for recipients in Calver County. We're running out of people, really. We do it in three states, in Maryland, Virginia, and in Delaware. If anybody's interested, please go onto operationraisedroof.com, see what we do, see what we have done. If you wish to help, also on that website will tell you how to nominate somebody, also how to help us afford to do the roofs. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. Come on forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for what you said, and just like Julie said, there's 30-some businesses right here in Calver County. I think we need to recognize them not only the week, October to November 4th, but all year long. We need to support these businesses. So, thank you for coming forth, and I have a proclamation here that states, "Whereas nearly one in 10 small businesses across the United States are veteran-owned, from Main Street to storefronts to virtually high-tech startups in advanced America, veterans-owned small businesses are a pillar of our economic and contribute to the foundation to our nation. And whereas veteran engineers have energy, skills, and disciplines further developed by the military service, along with a selfless commitment to the community and our country, and focused passion for what they do. And whereas we resolve to strengthen our communities, we must recognize, empower, support veteran-owned business throughout our economy. And whereas National Veterans Small Business Week highlights the programs and services available to veteran-owned entrepreneurs through the United States Small Business Administration and other resources partners. And whereas Calver County Government supports and joins the national effort to help America's veteran-owned small businesses start, grow, and rebuild to ensure our communities remain prosperous. Now, therefore, be claimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of October 31st, 2023, through November 4th, 2023, be known as National Veterans Small Business Week. Be it further proclaimed that we urge and encourage all citizens to learn more about Calver County's veteran entrepreneurs and how we can support them on their continued path to success, given by our hands and seals this 24th day of 2023, signed by all five Commissioners." Thank you.
Yeah. Veterans Commissioner, you want to come on up and join in the picture, please?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay, we have a proclamation for Operation Green Light, and I'd like to ask Brandon Tempo and Pat McCoy to say a few words.
Thank you. Good morning. Before we get to that, for Veterans Small Business Week, I want to thank Julie and the team at Economic Development. We are definitely in a supporting role in this and help out any way we can, but it has been driven totally by Economic Development. So, thank you so much for your work and the work of your team to recognize veteran business owners in our community. Moving to Operation Green Light, this is a National Association of Counties drive. It's been adopted all throughout the country and all throughout Maryland. Yesterday, I actually unplugged my phone from my car and listened to a little bit of local radio, 102.9, and was surprised when they announced on 102.9 that Calver's looking for businesses and citizens to light up their houses green and their businesses green during that week, which was great to hear when I'm driving down the road. It took me by surprise. So, it shows that the word's getting out there, and it's great to recognize the multiple issues that face veterans in our community, in our state, and our country. So, we thank you so much for this opportunity again, and...
Yep. You said it all.
All right. Let's introduce myself. I'm Brandon. I'm the chairman of the Veterans Affairs Commission in the county.
Would the rest of the Veterans Affairs Commission come forward, introduce yourself, please?
My name is Patricia McCoy. I'm the vice chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission here in Calver County.
Michael Sweeney, retired Army.
Lorraine Joyner, I'm a Calver County Government employee. I work for Department of Community Resources, and I provide admin support for the commission.
She's actually the backbone. She is indeed the MVP. And again, Jeff King from the commission. I am the local business representative.
Well, thank you all for being here. We have a proclamation for you today. I was going to give you a Vietnam story, but I think I'll pass. My husband might kill me. So, whereas the residents of Calver County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and recognize that the contributions and sacrifices of these men and women have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Calver County recognizes the honor reflected in the military value and tradition of answering the call to duty and the profound impact created by these individuals who have placed themselves in harm's way for the good of all and to protect our way of life and the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas veterans continue to build a legacy of community service by participating in veteran, civic, and religious organizations, and by functioning as county veteran service officers to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and there is projected to be an estimated 20% increase in the number of service members transitioning to civilian life in the near future. Studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life, with an increased risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties, the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, and the Calver County Veterans Affairs Commissions encourage all counties, parishes, and boroughs to join Operation Green Light to let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6th to the 12th, 2023. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that Calver County is officially designated as a Green Light for Veterans County. Be it further proclaimed that in observance of Operation Green Light, Calver County earnestly encourages its citizens to pay tribute and express gratitude for the service and sacrifice of our military personnel, both past and present, by participating in this annual event, given under our hands and seal this 24th day of October, 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you all.
(Applause)
Introduce yourself, Bailey, and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Bailey Sipbridge, and I'm a world baton twirler.
Congratulations. Come on up.
You can go up there.
Come on up.
I can talk about you next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief. This is the good part about my job right here, so I really enjoy highlighting youth and high achievements. So, I'm excited to introduce Bailey Sipbridge of Chesapeake Beach. She's a member of the Trilogy Twirl Club, run through Parks and Recreation, and is also an honor student at Northern High School. We are recognizing Bailey today for her outstanding achievement of finishing in third place at the U.S. National Baton Twirling Championships, and following that up with a 10th-place finish at the World Baton Twirling Championships in Liverpool, England. Even more impressive, Bailey accomplished her 10th-place finish against 900 other competitors, which is amazing to me. And I've seen her twirl. I didn't know twirling was such a thing. I could barely get it around twice. This young lady is amazing, and they come out to Parks and Rec events a lot, so I tell you, come out and watch this. You will be impressed, I promise. I'd also like to recognize the work of the coaches and children associated with Trilogy. CCPR has been fortunate to work with Trilogy for many years. Trilogy volunteers offer free baton twirling lessons to children in Calver County. This has been a successful partnership, and our staff has really enjoyed working with the coaches, parents, and children. Erica Rocha, Mr. George, and then Paul are back here to support you, and their staff really appreciates the time. We're invested in it. We get to make relationships with these people, and, you know, we want you to do the best that you can, and, you know, we're proud of you. So, Calver County Parks and Recreation congratulates you, Bailey, on this outstanding achievement, and we would also like to thank the coaches, parents, and children affiliated with Trilogy for following us to share moments like, allowing us to share moments like this with you. Congratulations, Bailey.
Mr. Smith, do you want to come up, please? And can we have the coaches come up? And are mom and dad here?
Bailey, I don't know if you know this, but Commissioner President Hans is also a baton twirler from way back. Did you happen to bring a baton with you today?
Oh, okay. Because he was going to show you what he could do if you did.
Yeah, me too.
She's very glad to see you. She likes standing nearby herself.
Yeah.
Which is funny because she's got no problem with it. She's a proud of a judge. She's like, "Oh, sure."
Absolutely.
Bailey, when did you start twirling?
I started twirling when I was around four, and now I'm 14. So, I'm going to my 11-year-old.
Well, congratulations. We are proud of you. How'd you like Liverpool?
It was really cool. I had to travel out of the country prior to that, so getting to go to Liverpool and London for my first time is quite an experience.
Oh, my gosh. You took advantage of it, didn't you? You did sightseeing. That's great. That's great. Two and a half weeks.
Very cool.
Oh, my God. That is wonderful. Well, congratulations. And congratulations that you're an honor student as well. I know it's a lot to keep up a sport and to keep up your grades.
It is.
Oh, my gosh. That's wonderful.
For many years.
Wonderful. Okay. What'd you guys say?
Are the boots available back here?
I think he's alluding to the fact that he had straight A's, too. I think it's what he was trying to do.
Oh, Commissioner Hans was an honor student and also twirls as well. So, good to know. Okay. Okay, let's get to the proclamation. Whereas the Calver County Board of County Commissioners takes immense pride in recognizing and celebrating the exceptional achievements of its residents, and whereas Bailey Sipbridge, a 14-year-old resident of Chesapeake Beach, demonstrated unparalleled talent and dedication in the world of baton twirling by winning a prestigious silver medal in the Nations Cup Youth X Strut Event and achieving a remarkable 10th place in the youth baton event at the 2023 World Baton Twirling Championship. The 2023 World Baton Twirling Championship held in Liverpool, England. I cannot read today. I feel like this is a, I feel like this is a tongue twister.
Should've had Commissioner Hans do it, you know, with his scholastic background there.
Oh, yes. Okay. And this is very important. Served as the twirling equivalent of the Olympic Games, attracting over 900 of the world's finest sport baton twirlers from 21 countries, including the United States, Canada, France, Italy, and Japan, all competing at the highest level. And whereas Bailey Sipbridge's participation in the world championship marked her debut on this global stage, showcasing her extraordinary talent and dedication to baton twirling. Before her remarkable performance at the world championship, Bailey Sipbridge distinguished herself at the U.S. National Baton Twirling Championships held in Kissimmee, Florida, where she secured the third-place position in the 14-year-old solo two baton and strut categories. And whereas Bailey Sipbridge is an outstanding athlete and dedicated student at Northern High School, where she excels academically with a 4.0 GPA, demonstrating her commitment to her education and her passion for baton twirling. Her dedication extends beyond her achievements as she generously gives her time to inspire and mentor future generations of baton twirlers as an active volunteer with Trilogy Twirl Club, a nonprofit free baton twirling program run through the Calver County Parks and Recreation Program. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to Bailey Sipbridge on her many achievements. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume their roles in society, given under our hands and seal this 24th day of October, 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations, Bailey.
(Applause)
Everyone get your blinks out really quick. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Well, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Senator. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We couldn't have done it. Parks and Rec, they've been so supportive.
Thank you for that.
Just good. A ball of yarn. And the rest of the stuff. Absolutely. Thank you all.
They got Nate. He's a pretty good guy, too.
Yeah.
We'll keep him around.
I, I, yeah. Welcome. Thank you.
Y'all take care. Congratulations.
Commissioner Ireland?
So, Captain Ronald Naughton, would you please come up, sir? Introduce yourself and say whatever you would like to say, as long as, you know, just be careful.
We'll have to bleep it out. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody. Retired Captain Ron Naughton from the Calver County Sheriff's Office. I would like to say it's been a pleasure to serve here in Calver County. Having had the pleasure to serve in metropolitan police in DC before I come here, it was a breath of fresh air to have a government that supported their law enforcement. Board of Commissioners and sheriffs along my way, all the sheriffs I've had, right up to today's sheriff, has been very supportive of the deputies of law enforcement, and it's been a breath of fresh air. And echoing what Pastor Nevin said this morning...
They got Nate. He's a pretty good guy, too.
Yeah.
We'll keep him around.
Thank you.
Y'all take care. Congratulations.
Commissioner Ireland?
So Captain Ronald Naughton, would you please come up, sir? Introduce yourself. And say whatever you would like to say, as long as, you know.
We'll have to bleep it out.
Good morning Commissioners and everybody. Retired Captain Ron Naughton from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. I would like to say it's been a pleasure to serve here in Calvert County. Having had the pleasure to serve in Metropolitan Police in DC before I come here, it was a breath of fresh air to have a government that supported their law enforcement. Board of Commissioners and sheriffs along my way, all the sheriffs I've had, right up to today's sheriff, has been very supportive of the deputies of law enforcement. And it's been a breath of fresh air. And echoing what Pastor Nevin said this morning, I give a lot of thanks to our Lord and Savior for keeping us safe through the years. Because even though it's Calvert County, you get in some situations sometimes. That's it.
That's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had the opportunity to work with Ronnie, I guess, for 27 years as a deputy at the sheriff's office. And Ronnie and I had a lot of fun together. Ronnie, without a doubt, is a practical joker. That's why I had to be careful as to what he actually said while he was standing up there. But I hope you have a retirement party, so we can tell some stories. I really do. We had a lot of fun over the years, but thank you for your service.
He's the only guy to get me out of the bathroom in my underwear.
See, I wasn't going to go there. But it wasn't Nerf pepper spray that made you come out. It wasn't a real thing. So, I'll tell that story. So Ronnie was in the bathroom and we had played some jokes with pepper spray throughout the years. And they made it a Nerf training pepper spray. So it sounds like pepper spray. It produces a cloud, but it's not pepper spray. So I gave Ronnie a couple minutes in the bathroom and I reached under the door with the Nerf pepper spray and just kind of gave it a little whoop. He comes running out. I think he got his underwear up. He comes running out. Just knowing it was a real thing. He was afraid to breathe. And if you've ever been sprayed by pepper spray, it's not really a very comfortable thing. So I get it. I totally get it. But he says, every time I tell that story, he says, I still haven't gotten you back for that day. So I'm waiting. I guess one day you're going to try to get me back.
That's our fault.
Right. All right. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Captain Ronald Naughton, a highly respected member of his community in the Calvert County Sheriff's Office, retired on October 6, 2023, after dedicating 28 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. And whereas Captain Naughton began his esteemed law enforcement career on November 16, 1992, as a police officer with the Metropolitan Police Department of the District of Columbia. In September 1995, he joined the Calvert County Sheriff's Office as Deputy Sheriff and has dedicated his career to faithfully serving his community with unwavering loyalty, compassion, integrity, and a strong commitment to ensuring the safety and security of our community. Throughout his career, he has excelled in various roles, including patrol deputy, narcotics investigator, criminal investigator, internal affairs investigator, patrol supervisor, hostage negotiator, polygraph examiner, patrol commander, and administrative and judicial services commander. And whereas Captain Naughton received numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from the community for his stellar performance and strong work ethic throughout his career, including sheriff's recognition for the investigation and apprehension of a bank robbery suspect in 2009, sheriff's excellence in law enforcement for a child abuse case in 2009, unit citation for productivity in 2014, and a sheriff's recognition for outstanding performance in 2015. Captain Naughton has provided reliable and exemplary service during his career, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, and admiration from Calvert County citizens and fellow deputies. Who's you pay to write this? His practical jokes, high spirits, sense of humor, excellent work ethic, and motivational leadership skills that inspired and empowered assigned personnel to succeed will be deeply missed throughout the sheriff's office. And whereas the Board of Calvert County Commissioners presents this proclamation as a tribute to Captain Naughton's outstanding accomplishments during his distinguished career, thereby recognizing this amazing man who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calvert County citizens, as well as expressing our deepest gratitude for his years of service, dedication, and bravery. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Captain Ronald Naughton on his retirement after 28 years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community and Captain Naughton's coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all his future endeavors. Given under our hands and seal this 24th day of October 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Sheriff, you want to come up? Anybody else want to come up and say a few words about Captain Naughton?
Morning Commissioners, Sheriff Cox. I just wanted to like to say thank you for recognizing Captain Naughton and his service to the citizens of Calvert County and the sheriff's office. I think he started his law enforcement career when I was in elementary school. So I've been in the brunt of his jokes throughout my 20-year tenure at the sheriff's office. And we're going to miss him. He has two sons that currently work through us and he's going to, they're going to carry on his legacy. And I believe that. And sir, I would just like to say thank you for all of your service.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Well, it says Timothy, but I don't know who that is. Tebow, would you like to come on up? Good morning, sir.
Tim Buckmaster, retired Lieutenant, Calvert County Sheriff's Office. I just want to thank everybody. It was an absolute honor to serve the Calvert County Sheriff's Office for almost 34 years. I am a homegrown boy, born and raised. So having the honor and privilege to serve a community that means so much to me and my family, you know, it's beyond words. So, thank you.
Is anybody here with you today? Want to come on up? Come on up? Now step at the mic? Where do you begin? So me and Tebow have been friends for probably almost 40 years. What's that? And I'm going to tell you, you know, I've had the honor and privilege of knowing so many members of law enforcement and to get to really know them. And, you know, people sometimes don't see them as human beings and people. And the stuff that they see, you know, taught me a word called unseeables. And there's just stuff that you can't unsee. Tebow has a unique trait to not let you see that in him. When he's in a room, you can't be in a bad mood when he's here. You just can't. He picks up the room. He can make my wife laugh out loud. I mean, to get her in a public setting and just laugh out loud. If you're at a function, you want to sit at his table because you're going to have a good time. It's been an honor and a privilege to be your friend for all these years. I can pick up the phone and call him and I'm going to get the straight answer, no matter what it is. And it's in today's world, that is just, it's such short commodity to have people that have that kind of integrity that you know, you know, no matter what, you're going to get what you need to hear. And going to miss you. And I'm jealous. Seems like all my friends are retiring. I'm still working. So I know what I did wrong. So, but it, I hope you have some plans. Do something to enjoy yourselves. Oh, okay. Okay. Well, see, see. Well, good.
My wife wasn't going to let me fully retire.
Exactly.
She said, enjoy 30 days.
You're not going to have around that much, right? And his families, he spoke, I mean, have, they're just, they're just great people. I mean, they've been friends with so many folks in his family for years and years and years. And so, so we'll good. It's nice to know we're going to see around the neighborhood here a little bit. And I'm going to read this proclamation to you. It says, whereas Lieutenant Timothy Tebow Buckmaster, a highly respected member of his community and the Calvert County Sheriff's Office, retired on October 6, 2023, after dedicating 33 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. Whereas Lieutenant Buckmaster served as a cadet with the Maryland State Police before beginning his career with the sheriff's office on January 2, 1990. As a deputy sheriff, he's advanced through the ranks and proudly served the agency personnel through leadership roles within several bureaus of the sheriff's office through his 33 years of service. He has provided reliable and excellent service, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, admiration from Calvert County citizens and colleagues who had the pleasure to work with him. And whereas Lieutenant Buckmaster's commitment to Calvert County is evident by his numerous recognitions and letters of appreciation from the citizens' dedicated service to the community. His commendable and distinguished service has been demonstrated with the spirit of pride and commitment throughout his exemplary career with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Lieutenant Buckmaster's outstanding accomplishments during his distinguished career, thereby recognizing this amazing man who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calvert County citizens, as well as expressing our deepest gratitude for his years of service, dedication, and bravery. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Lieutenant Timothy Buckmaster on his retirement after 33 years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community and Lieutenant Buckmaster's coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all his future endeavors. Given under our hands and seal this 24th day of October 23, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thanks again Commissioners for recognizing Lieutenant Buckmaster. Again, he was, he started his law enforcement career when I was in elementary school. I like to sling that joke at him, but, yeah. But we've worked alongside each other. Thanks for your service, Tebow, to the citizens here and the sheriff's office. I think we're losing 70-plus years of law enforcement experience with these two gentlemen here. They're going to be missed, but we are bringing Tebow back as our Kalia manager. He's detail-oriented and that person needs to be that. So I think he's going to be an asset to us in that role too as well. And we'd just like to say thank you.
That brings us to a public hearing, Department of Public Works, 255 JW Williams Road Land Acquisition. Deputy Director Jones, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Tom Jones, Deputy Director for Department of Public Works and General Services. I'm here to complete the public hearing part for the acquisition of 255 JW Williams Road. There are two public hearings scheduled for today. These hearings were duly advertised and the certificate of publication is made as part of this, part of the record of this hearing. Citizens are invited to provide comment on this hearing after the presentation has concluded. Anyone here in person must sign in on a sheet provided next to the county attorney to speak. The memo reads, "The Board of County Commissioners entered in an option agreement on December 13, 2022 with Philip T. Goldstein, Luisa Horton Goldstein, and Margaret Goldstein Janey for 255 JW Williams Road in Prince Frederick, Maryland. The option provided an opportunity to enhance public safety at the Barstow Convenience Center and to furnish the Prince Frederick wastewater treatment plant with additional discharge area in Prince Frederick, Maryland. During the conduct of due diligence, the county discovered the land was significantly less than expected. Purchase price was reduced to reflect the missing acreage and memorized in an agreement on the option agreement, amended on the option agreement, excuse me. Discussing Department of Public Works General Service Division negotiated with the property owners of two parcels located at 255 JW Williams Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland, the General Services Division offered a purchase option agreement. The property owners agreed and signed the purchase option agreement. Fiscal impact. Agreed sale price of $1,702,000. A deposit was given when the option agreement was signed of $5,000. Funding is currently available in account CIT 000016, Barstow Convenience Center. Conclusion recommendation. The Department of Public Works General Services Division requested the Board of County Commissioners accept the public comments regarding the proposed acquisition, close the record, and if appropriate, based on input received, exercise the amended purchase option by authorizing the president to sign the purchase and sale agreement and settlement documents on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. The floor has been open for public comment on this hearing. Resolution 6-89 was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine, use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or last four digits of their telephone number and muted and unmuted one at a time.
Mr. Jones, there is no one signed up to speak and there's nobody online. So you don't need to finish reading that.
Then that concludes. So open for comments.
Questions? So, and this is going to be used for a new water tower, is that also correct?
I'm sorry, is it?
New water tower.
I believe that is, yes, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any motion?
Yes, sir. Need a motion?
I move that we close the record and exercise the amended purchase option by authorizing the president to sign the purchase and sale agreement and settlement documents on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second?
I motion the second that we close the record and exercise the amended purchase option by authorizing the president to sign the purchase and sales agreement and settlement documents on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
That brings us to our second public hearing, Department of Planning and Zoning, ratification of internal loan and budget amendment from the Land Preservation Fund, the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund. Director Cook, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this second budget, this second public hearing is a budget adjustment to fund the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund, which is one of our tools for land preservations in the county. Just a reminder that there is a signup sheet if anyone would like to sign up after I read the memo. The Board of County Commissioners created the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund to preserve open space and natural areas in the county. By Ordinance 17-99, the Commissioners have promulgated rules and regulations concerning the administration of the fund. The purpose of this request is to ratify an internal loan from the Land Preservation Fund 28 to the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund. This internal loan was approved as a consent agenda item on the Commissioners' October 3, 2023 meeting. Fiscal impact. Budget Adjustment BA 2024 000173 would loan $1,300,000 from the Land Preservation Fund to provide funding for the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund. Note, there would be no net loss as the funds are proposed to be loaned for their intended purpose with repayment within two years. The Department of Planning and Zoning requests that the Commissioners hold a public hearing, accept public comments, move to close the record, and approve and adopt the resolution enacting Budget Amendment BA 2024 000173 to fund the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund. to fund the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund. There's no one signed up to speak.
So Director Cook, the loan fund's available for qualified organizations, correct?
Correct. There's an application that gets considered through our department.
So we have, as a matter of record, we have several nonprofit organizations in the county that work to preserve land and take advantage of opportunities that maybe we as a county can't.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
And we are making this move, this funding, because we believe there's an organization that may be in the process of acquiring a piece of property and has expressed some interest that they may need to borrow some money.
Correct, and we want to make that money available.
Correct. And so everyone knows it is a loan, it will be repaid. And, you know, we support all the efforts of our nonprofits out there that are preserving land in Calvert County. And this is just one of the tools. We provide them, so everybody understands what we're doing here today. Correct? Any questions or other comments?
Want a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move that we close the record, approve and adopt the resolution enacting Budget Amendment BA 2024-000173 to fund the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund and authorize the president to sign the unsecured promissory note.
Second?
I motion the second that we close the record, approve and adopt the resolution enacting Budget Amendment BA 2024-000173 to fund the Open Space Revolving Loan Fund, authorize the president to sign the unsecured promissory note. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Director Cook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consent. We have a couple items under consent today. Item number one, Department of Public Safety Budget Amendment for FEMA Elevation Project. Item two, Office of the County Administrator, North Beach Sustainable Communities Boundary Notification... Modification, sorry. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITB 2024-005 Vehicle Door Wraps Lettering and Graphics. Are there any objections to the items listed under consent today?
None.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Finance and Budget Interagency Commission on School Construction Loan Funding Support Letter. Ms. Atkinson. Director Miller, morning. Sushida.
Good morning.
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 Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst, Finance and Budget. Going to read the memo. Background. The Code of Maryland Regulation, COMAR, establishes the criteria for calculating the formula for the state of Maryland's participation in the eligible costs associated with public school construction. Each fiscal year, a request is made by the Board of Education through Calvert County Department of Finance and Budget to review the upcoming fiscal year's capital construction program requests and sign the inter-agency's Commission on School Construction Letter of Support. Discussion. The Department of Finance and Budget received the FY 2025 Capital Improvement Plan requests from the BOE and the requests for local support for construction projects. The BOE has identified the projects below for state and local funding. The BOE has listed Priority One, Request for State Funds for the First Year of Construction for the replacement of Northern Middle School. Priority Two is for an HVAC Systemic Replacement at Windy Hill Middle School. Priority Three is for Select HVAC Equipment Replacement at Plum Point Middle School. Priority Four is for Curtain Wall System and Select Skylight Replacements at, again, Plum Point Middle School. Priority Five is for Select HVAC Equipment Replacement at the Mary Harrison Center. Priorities Three and Four consist of state funding through the Healthy School Facility Fund, or HSFF, with the allocated local county share noted below. Below that is a table that describes each of the projects, one through five. The state portion, the local portion, and then the total for FY 25 of that project. Would you like me to read each one?
Sure. Make sure we have it in the record.
You're so sweet. Northern Middle School Construction, state, $8,012,000. Local share, $3,813,800. The total, $11,825,800. Windy Hill Middle HVAC Systemic. This is one of the projects that will be funded through the Healthy School Facility Fund, Local share, $308,300, with a total of $778,000. Plum Point Middle School Select HVAC Equipment. This portion of Plum Point will also be funded by the HSFF, $468,160 and $418,660 for local share, with a total of $886,820. Plum Point Middle Curtain Wall and Skylight. This is the state share, $539,000, with the local share, $410,000. Total, $949,000. Number five, Mary Harrison Center Select HVAC Equipment. The state portion is $338,800. Local share, $316,200, with a total of $655,000. I'll read the fiscal impact, and that'll give us the totals of each one of them. The state share total is $9,827,660. And the local or county share request is $5266,960. The BOE CIP budget always includes both state and local financial support. The FY 2025 local support would be funded by debt and excise tax, with the state support listed under Grant Other in the county budget. Conclusion recommendation. The Department of Finance and Budget requests the board to review and, if appropriate, sign the IAC Letter of Support for BOE's FY 2025 Capital Construction Program.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Ms. Warner, would you like to introduce yourself and if you didn't want to add anything?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Sushida Warner, Director of School Construction for Calvert County Public Schools. I brought with me Mr. Tony Navarro, Chief Executive Officer. And I believe Ms. Dawn Bolinsky is here as well. She was, if I turn around. Very good. So if you have any other questions unrelated to capital project, hopefully they can answer some of those. So I will go ahead and just provide a little bit of background about this letter of support. These five projects are outlined in here. The two that are Healthy School Facility Fund projects, we actually already have state funding commitment for those projects because it is a different pot of money known as the Healthy School Facility Fund program. So I just wanted to give you that information. However, the other three projects, Northern Middle School, Plum Point Middle Curtain Wall and Skylight, and the Harrison Center Select HVAC, those are CIP projects in the state's eyes. So the letter of support that we're looking for today is required to the state by November 30th. They require this letter of support because in the past, if there has not been local support for these projects, the state will likely pull funding. So that is the reality that we're looking at. I do want to kind of talk a little bit about our priorities. The Northern Middle School Replacement Project is our number-one priority. I was, of course, before you, I believe it was several weeks ago, where I spoke in a work session about Northern Middle and the importance of being able to make sure that we have a budget that will be able to move that project forward in construction. So I'll talk about that a little bit. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight today is really the importance of moving forward with Northern Middle School and why. So we have a unique opportunity with this particular project to gain a larger cash flow from the state and additional funding, and I'll explain that in a second. So typically, our allocation when it comes to CIP from the state averages about $3.8 million a year. And at that rate, if we were to fund Northern Middle, it would take almost nine years in state funding to complete that project. But because with legislation, the Bill to Learn Act funds are available and have been allocated specifically for Northern Middle, we can actually cash flow and get the project done in a quicker timeframe. So obviously, if you can get a project done quicker, you're saving on general conditions costs, you're saving on escalation. So it helps by concentrating and expediting the delivery of a project. So that's one thing.
So Ms. Warner, what's the total cost, projected cost for Northern Middle?
$57.2 million is what we are looking to budget at this time. We are getting a commitment of $33,728,000 from the state. That is a combination of CIP funds and Bill to Learn Act funds, which are about $13.5 million. So that's one aspect. The second aspect is, you might do the calculation and see that $33.7 million is greater than the normal 56% from the state. And the reason for that is because our most recent maintenance inspection from the state for Northern Middle School gave us a rating of good. With that combined with the fact that in COMAR, there was legislation that was passed that essentially says that if a project's assets are greater than 20% over its useful life and the maintenance inspection is adequate or good, the state will kick in another 5%. So they're giving us 61% for this project. This is a rare opportunity that we likely won't get again. What that equates to is basically $3.3 million additional from the state that we're getting for that project. So I just wanted to lay that out for you. I think it's an important consideration for the commissioners because that essentially lowers the amount of local funds that we would need. Is there a question?
Yes. When are we looking to break ground and how long will construction take?
Absolutely. So we are in early design right now. We are looking to break ground very early, January 2025, essentially. And we are looking to get completed by December of 2027. So a little bit less than a three-year timeframe versus with state cash flow, obviously, that would drag out quite a bit.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So essentially, the Northern Middle Project is important to the Board of Ed, obviously, as a priority. I do want to allay some concerns that Commissioner Hart you had had last time and Commissioner Hans regarding Patuxent Elementary, because obviously, one of the... Or the project, the only project that we were able to identify that we want to essentially leverage the local funds in order to get up to that $57.2 million basically are related to Patuxent Elementary. And so I wanted to kind of come back and talk about some of the concerns that were raised last time. One, the... We did, back in 2015 and 2019, through a couple of projects, replace the condenser and chiller for that school. So those are essentially new. I also did go back and have the work order history pulled up for that school for the last four years. And we show very minor isolated temperature and humidity concerns since that other equipment was replaced. So those work orders and the other work orders are unrelated. I want to go over one other thing that Commissioner Hans had brought up. And I want to kind of talk about how we essentially create a prioritization list. And so, you know, when you're potentially wondering, well, why was Patuxent Elementary in the CIP to begin with? So to answer that, when we look at systemic projects for our CIP, we obviously look at the age of the equipment. Then we look at the work order history. We also look to see if any of the components are no longer made, if they are not manufactured. It is probably a good idea, rather than getting aftermarket parts, to potentially look at a potential replacement of equipment. But then we also look at operational costs. So if we have a school that has HVAC equipment that is the same age, let's say, School A versus School B, with all other things being the same, we look at the operational costs. What are the costs for operating one building? Because the HVAC is a very, very large component of building operation, as I'm sure you all know with your buildings. So we try to look at that and leverage those operational savings. So Patuxent Elementary, if we compare it to the four sister schools, it's the third oldest, but operationally, it has been a little higher in comparison. So that being said, one of the things that we are looking at and that we've developed a plan for since I met with you last time, is we are looking at the fuel source for some of the equipment. We've got an opportunity potentially for doing a boiler and hot water heater replacement, converting from number-two fuel oil, which is very expensive, to natural gas because Washington Gas is available in the South. So that would help us leverage some of those operational savings. We, of course, would have wanted to be able to do a fuller-scale HVAC project, but you have to make some tough choices, and we understand that we have budgets that we need to work with. And we want to, obviously, work with the Board of County Commissioners. So that's one of the projects that we are going to be looking at through Maryland Energy Administration and Washington Gas. And so that would leave the unit ventilators and air handlers to be in a CIP cycle further out, but it would be no different than some of the other sister schools. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
What are your sister schools, to Patuxent again?
Yeah, it's Sunderland Elementary, Patuxent Elementary, Plum Point Elementary, and Windy Hill Elementary. Those are the four. They're essentially prototype schools. Right, and it was essentially a prototype school, similar systems really everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
So the HVAC system for Patuxent Elementary is now in 2031, is that correct?
That is correct. And that is right now. If we find opportunities to be able to move some things forward, we certainly would do that. So that's always something that we would be looking at to see if... Because CIP priorities move back and forth, but that is currently where it is.
Thank you.
So Ms. Warner, I think that what you heard from Commissioner Hart myself last time was the concern that, you know, when you come in and pitch for projects, and I can go back and pull the tape.
Absolutely.
You argue that they're old and the cost of repairs is getting to a point where they need to be replaced. And you argued that that system needed to be replaced. And then you came in and said, oh, no, it can last another 10 years, or seven years, or whatever. My math is not that good today. I think that's the concern that you heard from us that day was that, you know, a system three years ago had to be replaced, and now all of a sudden, they can last, you know, 10 more than we thought three years ago. I think that's what you heard from us that day. I think we really appreciate the fact that you figured out that you can extend the lives of these systems, you know, farther than you thought. But that's... I think that's what you heard from Commissioner Hart and I that day. And we didn't want to sacrifice the HVAC system in one school just so we can build a new one someplace else. As Commissioner Grasso says all the time, we need to fix what we have instead of worrying about building more stuff. So I think that's what we were expressing that day, was not so much... Was more about process, for me, anyhow. Because, you know, we were very conservative with taxpayer dollars, as you've learned, and these projects are very expensive. And it's really good to hear that there's an opportunity now at the state that we can get more support from them for a new Northern Middle School. That's excellent news. But I think that's what was going on that day when you first came in before us. HVAC systems are very expensive. It's shocking to me.
Unfortunately. I wish they were not.
And it's shocking to all of us what it costs to repair those. But in most cases, I always give you a support that most of the time, when you come in and ask to replace those systems, they have... they have outlived their life expectancy of what they were projected to, to last. So I understand that a 40-year-old, 40-year-old system that was only supposed to last 25, it's, it's got to be replaced. And it's just unfortunate that it costs $10 million, you know? It's just crazy. We spend more on HVAC systems than I think we spent to build some of the schools at the time. So.
That is true.
It is a lot of money. And, but this list, this letter today is just a letter to the state asking for support for these projects, just part of the process. And we, we still have to go through budgeting for some of these projects in the out years. It's just to garner state support. Don't want anybody to think that we're automatically committing to these projects today. This is just a process that we have to go through, so.
So I, I understand everything that you're saying, and I understand a priority letter. But what part I still don't understand is if three years ago, the system wasn't adequate and it affects the quality of life in there, that's why you would replace it. I mean, we know, and even today, as I've talked to people there, that there's still issues. We're still not going to fix it until, I'm sorry, what was that date again?
2031.
2031 is when it starts in the CIP. So that could be a couple of years after that, right? Or is that completion 2031, or is that?
Our plan is to be able to put design and construction funding and, and basically in that one cycle. So we could, we could get it done within one fiscal year. That's not an issue.
So, so 2032 potentially?
So it's FY 2031. So those funds would be available summer of 2030. So we could probably get it done in 2031.
Six or seven years from now, I guess. So, so nothing's changed, but yet we can go another six or seven years. So what is the plan to help those teachers and students with the being cold, being hot, you know, between now and then?
So that, that was one of the reasons why I was explaining the prioritization. I don't know if I necessarily on tape said that this, you know, system is completely beyond its life and it must be replaced. But the reason it was prioritized is because of, partly because of the life, but then also the operational costs. So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to bring up some of the things that we're identifying to be able to leverage those operational savings. So that being said, in terms of the equipment, it is no different than the unit ventilators that are at any of the other sister schools. They're on a similar replacement cycle. So we've taken care of a lot of other issues at Patuxent Elementary. Now, I've gone back and looked at work orders. I don't know in terms of anecdotal complaints here and there. All I can rely on is our work order system and our work order history. So having looked at that and pulled those records, I don't see any issues that were put in as a work order for, you know, system issues that, that required our HVAC staff to go out there and, and do a service call. So that's, that's what I'd have to rely on. In terms of the, the type of systems that these are, we would love to be able to replace the unit ventilators with a little bit of a more efficient system. Of course, we'd love to be able to do that. However, we understand that, you know, priorities are priorities. And the, because these are fairly simple units, you know, they, they are, they rely on a boiler-chiller arrangement. The chiller is reliable at this point. We're going to try to replace the boiler with a grant through potentially Maryland Energy Administration and convert it to natural gas. So that should take care of any potential heating issues. Otherwise, it's a fan. It's a fan with an actuator that modulates the heating and chilled water valves. So that's what you're looking at. And, and it's a, the, the beauty behind simple air handlers and HVAC equipment is there are less components that can go wrong. So our, our maintenance staff has really good familiarity because this equipment exists at all of these same sister schools. They have the knowledge to be able, and the confidence to be able to work on these as complaints come through.
So the boil, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I was just going to ask, the boiler replacement you keep referring to, is that going to happen still in 2031, or is that going to happen before 2031?
No, we're trying to get that done outside of the CIP. So that's why you wouldn't see that within the CIP. We're trying to get a grant to basically get that funded. Hopefully, in the next, I'm going to say, within the next one to two years. Because part of it is, is reliance on Washington Gas. And they do tend to be a little bit slower. So we're going to be getting an application in for that conversion. So it's that bureaucratic process. We can certainly move quicker, but it's when that grant funds come through.
So you're going to convert the system over to gas?
We are going to try, yes.
Then what happens in 31?
If the actual air handling equipment would actually get replaced.
So, so the air piece would, but the heat would remain the same?
Correct, because we're going to try to replace that within the next one to two years.
So I guess, back to Commissioner Hans's point, you know, my biggest question is, so it was inadequate then, but you believe it's adequate today?
That is not what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry, then please correct me. So, so, so is the system okay today?
I think the system is okay today. The reason, as I said, that we put the project within our CIP is because it, there are projects that are placed in our CIP based on the useful life. And systemics are, are, you know, incorporated into the CIP depending on when the system is beginning to age out or it's past being aged out. So it's no different than other projects where, for example, Sunderland Elementary. We had put Sunderland Elementary as a full systemic in our CIP several years ago. We were asked, because of funding concerns from the county, for us to break out what was critical. We did that. And now Sunderland is going to be, the remainder of the equipment is being put in later. We're making the same type of decision, only instead of it coming from the county, it is being made by the board to essentially defer some equipment that could be deferred so that we can capture those local funds for another project where we see an opportunity for greater state funds. So that's what I'm saying. I feel like it's a similar position.
Is the system adequate for today?
It is.
So, okay. It's not what I hear, but okay, we'll just have to. You go by, I guess, what your maintenance people tell you, and I just go by what the people inside the building tell me. But I guess that's just where that'll have to be.
I, I think it's, it's, it's similar to, you know, you can go into a newer building where there are folks who prefer temperatures that are a little bit cooler, a little bit warmer. So I think a lot of those anecdotal complaints are difficult to really parse out. But when you look at an actual work order and if maintenance is going in based on our heating set points and our cooling set points and the humidity, and they take actual readings based on what that tells you, that, that's what we have to base things off of. So it is, it's the data that I have to utilize. So I know it's a little bit different. That's what we have to rely on to be able to do our troubleshooting. And so that's, that's what we rely on, and that's what we have to look at to make those decisions.
So the set points of each school, is that different or the same for all the sister schools?
No, the set points for all the, all of the, the schools, elementary schools, middles, highs, we have specific set points.
And they're all the same set points, I'm saying, for each school? Or do they range school to school?
So it, it depends on, you know, elementary schools, it's, it's a little bit of a closer range because of the littler kiddos. It varies by one degree or so.
Okay.
At the middle and high school levels. But yes, we have a consistent set point policy and humidity. No, our set points are really our own. But in terms of, so Veronica's asking about actuary requirements, and that's humidity. There is sort of a recommendation for temperatures, but humidity, you want to try to maintain, you know, 60, 60%, 65%. You don't really want any higher than that. So that's what we aim for.
Okay.
I think, and, because you did open the door about asking other questions. I think some of my concerns have been, you know, and we've talked over the years, took 20 years to get AC at Patuxent High School's gym. You know, and we've built schools since then, you know, for 20 years. And, you know, my concern in Calver County School, the inadequacies there. And what I've always asked for is, I don't think we're asking a lot in this county that those, to me, should be standard as a pen and paper to have. I mean, you're going to hold, you're going to hold things in the auditorium, in the gym, you know, ROTC things, and it's 85, 90 degrees in there. You know, I've been to a lot of several schools where they don't have AC. And, and my thing is just to be, to have these schools where, where they should be. I think in Calver County, having air conditioning and heat should be standard. And it should work properly. And I shouldn't get calls that there's no heat or AC in the building.
We should be getting those calls.
You should be. And, and, and because things will break, right? And, you know, and, and I've brought up, and, and not necessarily with you, but, but with my last meeting with the school board, I brought up about having bathrooms that were adequate, especially for handicap folks, you know, outside on the fields. It's inadequate, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to address it, but I can speak personally that at Patuxent High School, the baseball field, you have porta potty. It's not handicap accessible. We pay $90 a month for it. We have water and sewer that's actually run out to that part. I would hope that in future times that we would address to where if somebody was handicapped and they went to a baseball game or soccer game or whatever, that we would have bathrooms. And those are the kind of things, when I see these big projects, and I understand, I do, you see state money, you want to grab everything that you can for there. But I would really like to see schools A to Z. I only know these because it's in my district. So I can't speak to, we've had people come in and talk about other schools. And, and, and I, I can't speak to that. But, but in my district, those are the things that I have seen. And that's my hopes when I, I see these things, that that's great. But I would like to know that, that we're working to a plan to address all that stuff. I mean, I brought up like a tennis court. If you've watched meetings, we've had people come and say that Northern High School doesn't have the amount of tennis courts that Honeytown has. Well, I'd like to just have one functioning thing and not send them over to Parks and Recs. My understanding, if you play tennis, you need four courts, I guess. We have three because one's damaged.
Oh, at Patuxent High School.
To play a tournament, I don't know anything about tennis. But just, I can just go by what, what citizens tell me. And, you know, I think you told me that, that's going to get fixed next year. But that's, it's, yes, sir, Mr. Tony.
Come to the mic, please, and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Tony Navarro, Chief Operations Officer of the Calver County Public Schools. It's my understanding that a contractor will be at Patuxent High School to repair that tennis court this week.
That's great, that's great, that's great news. And, and that, and the only reason I bring up, that was like four years?
As I said last time, we had a lot of trouble during COVID to really be, you know, I think during COVID is when that court was deteriorated. It has taken a lot. We've really relied actually on county staff. I know that our Director of Facilities has relied on them to get a contractor out there to look at the tennis court because we were having a lot of trouble just having anybody look at it. It's, it's been tough. It's a very niche field.
The, the number, we, as Commissioner Hart said, we're getting a lot of complaints about the number of courts at Northern because they don't have as many as everybody else. When you replace this school, is there going to be any opportunity to increase the tennis courts up there?
You read my mind. So that's one of the things we are looking at because the middle school has two courts currently. So we are going to, if we can afford it, we're going to create an add alternate for potentially trying to add two additional courts.
Would that get them up to Honey? The same numbers at Honey?
Yes, it would, it would. I believe Honeytown has eight, so they would get eight as well. I'm sorry?
Middle and high school would use both?
Uh, I think the middle school, I'm not sure how much they really use the courts, but the high school, I do know that when the middle school courts were redone, the high school was using them for practice. So they would have the ability to be able to use all eight. I know the middle school has made, they've coordinated with the high school to be able to use their fields. And, and there's a lot of that, that's a really nice benefit of having a co-located, you know, a campus that has a middle school and a high school to be able to combine those facilities and use them and schedule them as needed.
I'm glad you're here. Let me ask you something about Northern. Northern, when Nor, when that high school was built, were they originally going to have eight tennis courts but ended up with four? Was that ever in the plan for eight?
So that is a discussion that is prior to my time. I think there might have been potentially a, a wish to be able to get eight tennis courts. But I do know that when the programmatic requirements were created, the ed specs, I believe it was four courts at the time. So it might have been a conversation, but I don't think that it was ever, you know, formalized.
I don't know if you would know this answer, and I admit I know nothing about tennis. But I'm getting a lot of complaints in D3 that in order to have tournaments, four courts at Northern is inadequate. Do you know if more are needed, if there should have been aid? Or is there any prospect in the future to add more courts there?
Well, like I said, when we go to commence the Northern Middle Project, one of the things that we're going to try to do is identify as an add alternate. And if we can potentially afford it, depending on how we break the job up and, and how it comes in, the two, we, we are looking to carve out two additional courts. So that would make Northern Middle's courts from two up to four. And Northern High would be able to utilize both sets of courts. So they would just have to schedule that with the middle school.
Just for my information, when we design a school and we're just about ready to go forward, we're, we're tweaking the design and so on and so forth, what kind of input do we get from the high school? Do we get, or an elementary school or a middle school? Do coaches take a look? The principal, who has input with the design?
Sure. So what we do when we, even before that, even before design, when we develop our ed specs, which are the programmatic requirements, we seat a committee to develop the ed specs. The committee is made up of people from my department, facilities, transportation, central office in terms of instruction, athletics. They are on the committee. We also include the principal of the school because generally, these have been replacement projects or, you know, if it's going to be a renovation. Sometimes the assistant principal. We always have a parent representative, and we have one or two teacher representatives. So we have a committee that starts with the ed spec process. Then when we go into design, that committee is, the, the parent representative might leave because their kids might have left. And so then there might have to be a replacement with someone else. But that stakeholder committee stays and is maintained through design. So when we go through schematic design, design development, through those phases, a lot of important decisions need to be made. And so we make sure that we maintain that committee. So that input is provided the entire time, not only when we're developing the program, but through design as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask too, while we're, while we're on it, and I'm not one to, you know, hey, St. Mary's has this, or Charles has that. I, I don't like to get into that. It's, we have lesser people or, you know, whatever an area's wish list is or whatever their priorities are. But I have asked for years about, we don't seem like we ever include anything athletically, very little in the CIP. And, you know, parents travel. And this county has a lot of parents that children do athletics, they travel sports and what have you. When you go to other jurisdictions, you do see a lot of money put into these facilities. I know the baseball scoreboard at PAX runs off a generator. And, you know, I don't want to use disparaging words. I just think we're better than some of these things. And, and if the fault is on the Board of County Commissioners that we're not funding at a level, I wouldn't know that because no one ever brings it to me. You know, I told the sheriff years ago when I was first running, I told Sheriff Evans, I said, you know, if you have a problem and you don't bring it to me, I said, you know, if you have a problem and you don't bring it to me, then that's your fault. But if you bring it to me and I can't fund it, then it's my fault. But to find out things by just being out in the community is troubling sometimes. Going, you know, and I'm not gonna beat dead horses, I mean, you, you know, uh, you travel, I would assume, and, and, and go to these places, but I, I just think when mom and dad get out of the car, there should be a proper bathroom facility. I do think, yes, yes, Ms. Dawn, um, just, just, I would just like to see our facilities get a little more attention.
Hi, um, my name is Dawn Balensky. I'm a Board of Ed member, and, um, I just wanted to weigh in on this because you're right. Um, historically, and I've been on the board for, you know, eleven years, historically, Calvert County has not concentrated very much on sports. Um, and when I finally caught up to that, or the board, um, at, about four years ago, um, you know, we were getting lawsuits against us only having a limited number of tennis courts at, at Northern High School, you know, and so the board started asking the questions, why aren't we getting input, um, from our schools, from our athletic directors and the like, um, to help solve this? It has, it has risen, the level of our inattention to sports has risen to a level where we have finally started putting it into the CIP. We have refurbished our entire fields because over the years, you know, I think we've come to you guys and said, you know, we'd love to have turf on our fields. Um, and back in the day when it was only a million dollars a field, you know, it, there was, I don't know if we ever had a formal discussion, but we brought it to the commissioners to say, hey, what about it? You know, um, we're having, that decision was never made at that time, but we did decide to go ahead and, and to make our fields, uh, our natural fields workable. So that's in process, that's done right now. Um, we, uh, hope that, that the turf discussion might happen in a few more years, you know, we'll just have to see how our, our, uh, accumulative, uh, fu, funding works on that. But, um, in general, um, as far as, uh, like this question here, the SIP, the CIP, um, and getting commissioners sign off on it, um, I, you know, I just want you guys to know that, uh, we have an excellent, um, construction department, we have an excellent facilities department. Our county is known in the state for getting high, very high marks on our maintaining of our buildings. And as you well know, when you have your own, uh, CIP, putting priorities in for long-term things, that can change all the time. There's a lot of moving parts on, um, what projects are gonna be stepped up and, and take priority over others. Um, you know, I'm from the South, I've always fought for Southern buildings. When we first came in, we said, our Southern schools who have a more challenging population need more resources. Those were geared, I have to say, towards academics and mental health and the like. So we, as, as a board, were able to funnel funds through, um, at a higher level, um, for the more challenging populations. And to me, that's, that was, I'm very proud of that as a board. Um, I never heard myself, I've never heard anyone complain of, uh, heating, cooling issues at PACC. Um, as you all know, being in older buildings, one room's hot, one room's cold, and it's a, it's a bear, you know, to, to manage that so that everyone's comfortable in a building. But our staff, as, as Chita said, Ms. Warner said, our staff, you know, gets that input, and they are very responsive. So I'm just trying to, uh, allay any fears that we are, you know, from a full-on perspective, ignoring our Southern schools, that is not true. Um, and I think that Ms. Warner and this CIP, you know, is doing a very good job trying to manage, um, how much money we can spend on any one particular project. Another thing, um, I don't know if, uh, this is, I heard it yesterday, um, that the state is reevaluating the new, the amount of square footage that they will approve in elementary, middle, high school new construction, that is currently being done now just because of blueprint issues, things like pre-K, expanded pre-K. And then in the middle and the high schools, just programmatically, you know, we're requiring more, um, you know, CTE education, we're requiring more dual enrollment. Um, and so some of that is going to translate into larger square footage. So hopefully in the future, you know, we won't have to defer our own maintenance, you know, projects, just to be able to afford what we think is a requirement for our new middle school that's going in. So, um, that was just what I wanted to say.
So just a clarification on the fields, that was only your stadium fields at your four high schools?
Yes.
Okay.
I did get a call the other night about the girls couldn't play on it, so, from Northern.
Well, that's another thing I wanted to say is please pass those, those, uh, questions to us. As, as Ms. Warner said, if she had heard some of the PACC concerns, maybe things have been different, you know, so, or so that she could have facilitated something. And if the board gets, you know, the barrage of complaints that you guys are getting, which we probably already have, but, you know, you didn't know about it, and we didn't know that you got it. Um, so please do, let's, let's, uh, pass that along to the board so that we can help us address what you're hearing.
And we don't solicit those complaints?
We don't either, but it happens.
In most cases, I think, at least when I hear, they feel like they're not getting heard at the board, and so they end up coming to us. Ms. Bupslar, if I'm pronouncing her name correct, from Northern.
Correct.
Bobser.
She is.
Big proponent of the Northern High School tennis.
She was with me this afternoon.
As you know, uh, the site at that school, you know, is challenging, right? We're on, we're on, uh, ravines, and it limited the space that we were allowed to allocate for, um, this is what I was, you know, for the tennis courts. So we're beg-barring and stealing from space for Northern Middle. We, luckily, they were able to use the Dunkirk Park, thank you very much. Um, but it's a shame, you know, yes, we should have had eight courts just like Huntington, but we couldn't. So, um...
But Dawn, while I got you, and you see what you said, eight, PACC's been running on three, and you're down there with me, you hear what I hear, you know, and, and, and it, it sounds like complaining, but it's not. It's stating fact that when a high school's built with two gyms, and both gyms have AC, and our gym takes twenty years, it starts to formulate an opinion down there that, what's going on? And obviously, you and I have been down there for years. You hear it like I do, you know I'm at the schools five days a week, you know, and I've been very active between Parks and Recs fields and stuff sitting there. So you know I hear it almost daily, um, and, and so I appreciate that, you know, but, but you know, you know how I hear it, you know, you know they come into my work, or I hear it out there, but I don't have an explanation. And that, and that's why I ask, you know, in, in the CIPs, I do appreciate, I guess, what, two years ago, you sent letters out to the ADs for requests? What they, what they wanted? And what I was told, and I can just tell you what I was told, that they were told, you're not getting turf fields, so take that off your request and pick something else that you could get. But that's, doesn't, and, and I don't know if turf fields solved the problem, I'm not even talking about, I'm just talking about the whole, a whole facility of, you shouldn't be turning on a generator for a scoreboard. You know, I, the donations that people are making to try to have things, you know, um, you do know there's a private group trying to replace the scoreboard at Petoxon High Football. And I just think as a county, and I think it's hard to explain to mom and dad, the millions and millions of dollars that we spend, you know, they would like to know why. And that's all I'm asking, and, 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 you know.
You know, what I'm thinking is, uh, that I will make a formal request, um, to the superintendent, that we develop a, a status of reporting of all of our requests from our schools, of all of the complaints that we've heard from the public, and things that are missing in our high school and middle school sports programs, um, facilities-wise. And then we will then begin the conversation with you. Um, and just, first of all, just help to, uh, illuminate for you, you know, what our priorities are and what, what's coming from the schools. Um, because, you know, we can do this all day long, you know, um, so...
And we hear about the turf all the time, but for me, just speaking for me, we have so many inadequacies that we need to fix, 'cause I tell everybody, turf is like a Cadillac. Right now, we've got a Chevy, but we don't even have a Chevy in some areas. You know, as Commissioner Hart says, bathrooms and the scoreboard's gotta run off a generator, and we don't have enough tennis courts. Turf fields for me are way in the back.
Well, there's a lot of controversy with turf fields as well now, too, with health issues and injuries.
Once we got all the basics fixed, then I'll talk about turf fields. But I think we need to address the basics before we start talking about luxury.
So I can speak a little bit to this conversation. We, after, um, Commissioner Hart, you were talking about a letter being sent out to the ADs, we did form an athletic advisory committee about two years ago, uh, that essentially we meet with on a quarterly basis, uh, facilities, and I, I believe Mr. Navarro could probably speak to this a little bit as well, but we meet, uh, on a quarterly basis to go over the priorities, see if any of their priorities have changed, shifted, but that is why we have field houses in our CIP now. So in this current CIP, um, under the local line, because it's just gonna be a local expenditure, the state doesn't participate in athletic outside of the main educational building, uh, the Pa, uh, Petoxon High School Field House that's in our CIP. That is an opportunity for us to look at those ADA restrooms. It's a great opportunity for us to really incorporate that in there. Um, so, uh, you know, the, uh, field houses, tennis courts, tracks, um, those types of things, visitor bleachers at Northern High, all of those types of facilities that are athletic in nature, we, um, basically, we've gotten input from the ADs, and those have been put in the CIP because of that input. And we garner that input all the time, so one of those priorities had recently been changed based on input from one of the ADs. So, so those, those are things that we are doing. We recognize that, you know, not all the funds are there to be able to do it all at once, but we are soliciting that input, we're utilizing that input to make, you know, capital projects incorporated within our CIP.
I give you a great example, so Commissioner Hanks can tell you, you know, a few years ago, we had porta-potties at the golf course. Gross. I mean, they, they're gross, let's just put it out there where it is. And some of the tales and stories that were coming out of there, you're like, mm, no. So we got rid of them, and we put a couple of freestanding, regular bathrooms there, and all those issues went away, and, you know, I'm not asking for the Taj Mahal, but, you know, these were prefab bathrooms, they drop down, you run water and sewer to it, and voila, you have a bathroom. And, you, you know, I, I just would think that those things are standard-type things, and so, I mean, thank you for, for that they're putting that together, I just hope it's sooner than later.
It's in the CIP for this year, so yeah, we're, we're gonna be undergoing.
For replacement bathrooms?
No, no, for the field house, Petoxon High School.
I have two observations. I toured, uh, the sports facilities at Northern High School. One thing, and I, I, you know, I'm, I've watched my kids play sports, I am not a sports person, but I was kinda taken aback that boys soccer, girls soccer, and girls field hockey were all practicing in thirds on one field when you had this whole big field here. One observation. But one thing that was particularly distressing to me, they were doing the, uh, the boys' field, you know, that diamond and all that stuff, and I watched, I went in, I went into their, um...
Baseball field?
Baseball, did I say that?
You said the diamond thing.
Yeah. And then I went into the dugout, and they had really nice dugout with great seats, and then I get to the girls' championship this year, this year, this year, this year, this year, and theirs looked like, in a word, crap. I'd love to see that improved upon. It was horrible. Their dugout was horrible, their field was horrible. I can only hope that because they were doing the boys, the girls were next because they sure as heck needed it. So those were my observations up at Northern, and that's my district, and it, it was distressing to see what the girls looked like, and I didn't see any championships on the boys. May have overlooked, maybe they had one, but the girls had championship after championship, and were dealing with crappy facilities.
Maybe because the boys didn't have championships, that's where we decided to put the geothermal well field, so essentially, they had no field for about two years. Um, so because we did our geothermal...
What does, what does that mean?
Oh, so it's, it's an HVAC system that is very, very energy efficient. Basically, you're using the earth's temperature to be able to, um, uh, to, because the air, if the air is thirty-two degrees and the ground temperature is fifty-five, you don't have to bring up the temperature, your equipment isn't struggling to bring the temperature up to seventy degrees. So essentially, the, the, when you dig geothermal well fields, though, it looks like the surface of Mars, and it's very, very, you know, you, you can't really get on it until after you have covered up all those geothermal wells, so after the topsoil. The only thing we could do is to bring that field back, we had sod. Um, so that field was sodded, but that is typically not what we do, that's, that's a pretty big expense. So all of the irrigation system and the sod, that was part of the high school project, which, so that is why the boys got this nice little side effect of having, uh, their field unplayable for a couple of years because that's where the geothermal wells were.
They sure got rewarded. They, they got rewarded with that, nice bleachers, nice, nice dugout, and the girls looked like crap. But anyway, I go on and on. Just so you know, I'm so glad that you all are here to hear this because when we're out and about, we're always getting pulled, and, and then we have to come back and research and get answers for our constituents, and, um, and it's not just one or two people. We hear, you can hardly go in a grocery store without listening to people, and that's our job, and that's what I wanna do. But I'm so glad you're here to know what I observed in complaints from my constituents in D3. Thank you.
Can I just say one last thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, and thank you guys, uh, you know, for letting us be here. I, um, you know, we do listen to what happens at the commis, commissioners' meetings, so, you know, it gets back to us eventually. But I just wanted to, uh, to be here because I didn't want Ms. Warner to have to take the brunt of something that the Board of Ed, you know, approved and reviewed and things like that. So that's why I'm saying, if we could have more communication through the, either superintendent's office or, or ours, so that we can have a heads-up and then be able to address some of these sports concerns. Um, I do hope, though, that you are very pleased with the academic performance scores that have come out recently, and that, uh, you know, every school system has ways to go to get their kids up, but Calvert, uh, was spectacular. I thought we did an excellent job, and I think, you know, we've always, it's taken twenty, twenty-five, thirty years to build that academic excellence that we have, and so, um, and I'm very proud of that. But it's gonna take, now that we've started to try to focus more on sports, which we've not historically done very much focus on, it will take us a little while to, to get us up to things that everyone can be proud of.
And a good learning environment is discipline with consequences to actions. Um, we have an awful big problem of, uh, lack of accountability in our schools and disruptions within the classrooms, that children who want to learn and want to be there, it's interrupting their day. So I think we can all work together on that. And would you recommend coming straight to the BOE or filtering through the superintendent's office? What is the best way to have a dialogue?
Both. If it's gonna be through email, um, copy in all of board members as well as superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bellis, we really appreciate you coming in today.
Yes, definitely. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Warner opened the door when she said, we can talk about anything.
Well, we did last time, so figured I'd bring the expertise on this time.
We do, we do appreciate you taking our questions and doing your best to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I have a motion. I move that we approve and sign the IAC letter of support for the BOE's FY 2025 capital construction program.
I have motion second that we approve and sign the IAC letter of support for the BOE's FY 2025 capital construction...
FY 2025 capital construction program. Is there any discussion on that motion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Oppose.
Uh, one, order one. You all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in today.
Thank you.
I believe that brings us to public comment. Mr. Cannon, attorney?
Thank you, sir. The board adopted a resolution 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. By resolution 51-20, persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. All speakers must identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, will you be allocated five? For those attending virtually, and there are none, so I'll skip that part. And the Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment, that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. Anybody in the room wishes to speak at public comment, please go to the microphone, identify yourself, and whether speaking as an individual. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Slaughter, Pam. And first, I'd like to give the commissioners a handout that I prepared for them.
Thank you. Anybody speaking for yourself?
So, I'm speaking for a group.
Which group, ma'am?
The Nealdes State Beach Erosion Group. So, good morning, commissioners. My name is Pamela Slaughter. And last week, I sent to each of you an email concerning my constant fear of encroaching shoreline erosion at my home. A few days later, I sent you an attachment which gave, uh, a timeline of those events, beginning, I think, in September 2020 to present. I live on the bay in Nealdes State, once a community with a very large expansive beach. Today, especially since the passing recently of Hurricane Ophelia, the bay and the sand has, the sand has vastly diminished in front of our homes. Personally, I have approximately only 30 feet between my home and the bay's water. I and my neighbors have been struggling to get some protection for our homes from rising water and severe erosion, which is occurring more and more frequently. As I mentioned to you in my email, we have been working diligently for three years on two projects. The first project, which is a private project, is to build a timber retaining wall for our beachfront properties. And I'm a member of those beachfront properties. Nine homes in our community, which are situated north, in the north part of the community, near Breezy Point, erected a timber retaining wall in 2010. And as a result, they have had no further erosion on their property. Our second project is an offshore breakwater living shoreline using grant money. Both projects are moving forward, but they're moving very, very slowly. I do fear that my home is one bad storm away from being undermined by the bay's powerful winds and waves. My septic and drain fields are bayside and very vulnerable. When a storm comes, I am in constant fear of further erosion, that the waves and water will reach the foundation of my home. I have given you photos of how our beach looked 10 years ago, 2013. First, that's a picture of my house with the beach in front of it. And as you can see, uh, I'm, I think we had maybe 100 or 150 feet at least in front of sand. That is also a picture with my house in the background. And that shows how wide the beach was in 2013. So, only 10 years ago. So, we had small storms from, well, small, we had storms from 2013 to 2020, but none has been as bad as the ones that have recently happened since 2020. So, this is the beginning of severe erosion in front of my house in 2020. So, I'm, you can see how much, uh, sand was taken away. In 2020, because there was, um, Hurricane Teddy, who was like a hur, I think it was a category four. It was offshore in the ocean, but it really, um, caused a lot of shoreline erosion on our beaches. Um, so the county, we asked the county for help and they gave us sand and small sandbags. And, um, we spent several weeks filling them. And then, the next page shows we placed them along the beach. However, not too long afterwards, I think it was a southeasterly storm that came. And as you can see, the next page, it washed all of those bags into the bay. Then, we decided that we would try the one-ton, large one-ton sandbags. Um, so, those black bags that you see, those are, um, they're very strong. They're tight, they're like sewn together. I think there are eight that come as a set, but they're also...
Please wrap up your comments.
Sorry?
Your five minutes are up. If you please wrap up your comments.
Okay, let me, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going on what I have to say. It's not too much. Um, they say that the beach comes and goes. Comes with the southern winds and goes with the northern ones. However, every year, more and more sand is taken away from our shoreline. The bay, also, the bay water is definitely rising. Storms are more intense. And personally, I have lost between 20 and 25 feet of property in front of my house since 2013.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm afraid your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And there's still nobody online? Is there anyone else in the room?
That's all. So, that brings us to commissioner reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I did attend a graduation over the weekend in VFRLI, or DI. It was a multiple-state program. And several volunteers went through the training and graduated, uh, this weekend from it. Also, attended the oyster festival over in St. Mary's County. Um, and a reminder of the health fair going on this weekend at Trinity Church. And also, there's a cook-off at Sasseras Farms this weekend. Uh, so, come out Saturday afternoon and enjoy some, uh, good food and beverages.
Thank you. Commissioner Harland?
On the 19th, attended Lincoln Reagan Dinner, uh, White Sands. It was very well-attended, had some outstanding speakers there. I'll find out Saturday, I'll be a pop-pop to another little baby boy.
Congratulations.
And Thursday night, thank you, sir.
What did you say? What did you say, Todd? Say that again.
Have another baby.
Grandfather again.
Congratulations.
There's another baby on the way, another...
And it is Chelsea, thank goodness.
Grandson.
Another, yes, thank God, another grandson. Congratulations.
And Thursday night, we have Treats with the Trades, uh, that CTA is putting on. And it is from 5:30 to 7:30. Um, put on your Halloween costumes, join us for a night of family fun. Receive a sweet treat while exploring the programs offered at CTA. Admission's $5 per family. And they'll have pizza for sale. So, if you're looking for something to do Thursday evening, or, I'm sorry, Tuesday, October 24th, I'm sorry. If you're looking something to do Tuesday, October 24th...
That would be today.
They would love to see you.
That would be tonight.
It's tonight. Thursday, I have another one. That's what it is. My wife's, my wife's guiding me on these things.
Maybe your wife should sit in the chair. Thank you. Commissioner Grassau?
Okay. On the 17th, all of your county commissioners met with our delegation, um, both delegates, Delegate Long, Delegate Fisher, and our Senator Jackson. And, um, to put forth what we would like them to do for you as citizens within this upcoming legislative session. Um, I also attended, uh, the Lincoln Reagan Dinner, the Calvert County Republican Central Committee Lincoln Reagan Dinner. Traditionally, they've had it at the Hall at Huntington. It was held at Vera's and it was well-attended. It was very nice. Congresswoman Kat Kamic was the keynote speaker. Boy, she was a breath of fresh air. We need 100 or so more of her up there. And then, on the 21st, I attended the North Beach Festival put on by the Chamber. It was pretty well-attended, but I think the oyster festival really, really took a lot of people to that. Uh, they had, in their defense, they had to reschedule because of poor weather a month or so ago. But it, it was quite nice. That's it.
Good. Commissioner Hart?
Uh, nothing today, Mr. President.
Oh, jeez. So, the Lincoln Reagan Dinner, that Congresswoman was from Georgia and, uh...
Was she wasn't from Florida?
Florida.
Florida, Florida.
She was from Georgia, but she was a Congresswoman for Florida.
Yeah, that's right.
She moved there with her husband.
Yeah, she grew up in Georgia, but she moved to Florida. Yeah. So, and she talked about all the, uh, I don't even know how to describe the malfunctions in Congress today.
Childishness.
Yeah.
She referred to it as...
Yeah. So, uh, it was, and the food was excellent. First time I've been to Vera's in a long, long time. And, uh, they did have good food and a good crowd. On Sunday, I attended Eagle Scout Ceremony. And all I can remember is Jason Morrissey, was that his last name?
Jackson.
Jackson. His first name is Jackson.
Jackson Morrissey.
Yeah, Jackson Morrissey. At Jefferson Patterson Park, 17-year-old young man. I say all the time, if you have young children, you should get them involved in scouting or 4-H. One of those two organizations will help mold your children into be great adults. Just to recap, a few public service announcements. Uh, there are going to be a trick-or-treat event at Hollowing Point State, at Hollowing Point Park this Friday night. You can only enter through the industrial park. The 231 entrance will be closed. Um, we're not going to have a meeting next week. Public comment for the changes to the voting districts or voting precincts is going to close this Friday. You have to go online to submit your comments. And animal adoption discounts at Linda Kelly Shelter is next week. And for $5, you can adopt an animal, which is a great deal. I think that concludes all my comments.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I received a text that I just noticed. And evidently, the girls' fields at Calvert High School are just as bad as the girls' fields at Northern High School. So, let's get that on the record.
I don't mean to laugh. I'm sorry.
Get that on the record.
It's just, it's so, it...
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
They probably have championships, too, Gotham.
Probably do.
The Hollowing Point Park Master Plan Survey is still ongoing online, if you want to have some input into the master plan development for the future. That concludes all my comments. Mr. Vice President, do you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Sections 3-305B-1I, to discuss such matters with employees over whom the board has jurisdiction as is allowed by law. 3-305B-7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. 3-305B-8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And 3-305B-10II, to discuss public security because the board finds that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or to public security in the development or implementation of emergency plans.
That's a lot.
Second.
Yeah. A motion, second, to go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Everyone, have a great day.
Thank you all.